Good evening, everybody. This is the December 16, 2015, a little bit ahead of myself, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to begin it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're all invited to join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items for adjournment because the applicants are not ready to be heard. Number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes, Nissconset. Number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number three, 2015-05 Thomas Giswali, Kings Park. Number four, 2015-11 Samir Mustafa, Comac. Number five, 773 Scholar States, Comac. Number six, 1135 Tuamee Platt, St. James. Number seven, 1156 Map of Open Meadow, Fort Solongo. Number eight, 1157 Map of Core at Kings Park. Number nine, TC 2015-02 SMSA Limited Partnership. Number 10, 2010-06 KBC Holdings. And number 11, 911A Glen Hill Northern, St. James.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on any of the matters that were just read regarding which the Planning Department is recommending we adjourn? Okay, seeing none, a motion, please?
Chairman, motion to adjourn those matters recommended by the department for adjournment.
Second.
Full favor? Aye. Opposed, none? So adjourned.
The first item under new hearings and decisions is a zoning petition, number 12, 2015-13 TDG Comac LLC, Comac. Number one, reason for report. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on December 16, 2015, to consider the above referenced petition to change the zoning from WSI Wholesale and Service Industry and R10 Single Family Residences to RMGA Garden Apartments to permit construction of an age-restricted garden apartment complex. Number two, the applicant, TDG Comac LLC, 7600 Jericho Turnpike, Suite 110, Woodbury, New York, 11797. Three, the site, the site is a 6.75 acre square-shaped single tax lot. The site has 550 feet of frontage along Jericho Turnpike. The topography includes steep slopes along the road frontage and the center of the site. The site elevation ranges from 110 feet to 145 feet above sea level. The groundwater is approximately 58 feet below the land surface, and the site is not near any wetlands or flood zones. The nearest surface water, a recharge basin, is located 300 feet north of the subject property on the north side of Jericho Turnpike. Number four, the zoning, the site is zoned WSI and R10, 36% and 64% respectively. To the north, WSI along Jericho, R10 beyond. South, R10 and R21 southeast. To the east, R10, WSI and R21 beyond. And to the west is OB and WSI. Five, the land use. The site is a motel consisting of two one-story motel buildings and a utility structure. To the north, limousine establishment and vacant land across Jericho, single-family residences beyond. To the south, single-family residences. To the east, motor vehicle sales and wholesales business. To the west, a daycare center and swimming pool sales wholesale business. Six, the zoning history. 1932, zoned A business, 200 feet depth from Jericho Turnpike, and A residence, two homes per acre. In 1949, zoned E neighborhood business, 200 feet depth, and C residence, 10,000 square feet. In 1955, motel constructed. In 1958, rezoned from E to G1 WSI. In 1984, special exception. 1984-11, approved to permit expansion of motel on WSI portion of the site. 1985, site plan approval for expansion of motel in WSI portion of the site. 1997, site plan addendum approved for modification of structures within WSI portion of the 2011, zone change petition filed to change R10 portion of site to WSI, case 2011-01, to legalize additions constructed in R10, withdrawn in 2015. Number seven, the proposal to construct an age-restricted apartment building containing 118 units, 42 bedroom units, and 76 one-bedroom, 42 two-bedroom units and 76 one-bedroom Eight, the planning considerations. The Town Comprehensive Plan adopted in 1961 recommended that Jericho Turnpike corridor be predominantly WSI to provide wholesale, supply and service businesses. Since 1961, the town has rezoned many more properties to WSI. This is probably the main reason for reduced demand for WSI zoned land. In February 2015, the Planning Department completed a draft update of the Comprehensive Plan. Although the Town Board has not yet decided whether to adopt an update, it nevertheless is a product of a comprehensive analysis of the town's needs, constraints and trends. The updated plan designates most of the Jericho Turnpike corridor for automotive-related land uses, but also includes apartments and townhouses. The update reveals that the town lacks the diversity of residence types needed to meet the present and future needs of town residences. Nationwide, about 33% of all dwellings are in apartments or townhomes, but in Smithtown, the number is about 15%. According to many studies, this imbalance has caused many residents in their early twenties relocate to other parts of the U.S. and has created a brain drain here. In turn, this has hampered Long Island business in trying to hire productive workers. The site is in a suitable location for the proposed use. It is within walking distance to a large neighborhood shopping center located 600 feet to the west. The location has good access in that it fronts on a four-lane primary arterial highway. The highway is used as a bus route. The site is not located in or near any surface water, wetlands, flood hazard areas or high groundwater areas. The only significant constraint is the topography. The site rises steeply up about 30 feet from Jericho Turnpike and then levels off. This is not worse for garden apartments than for other land uses except parkland. The site could be developed so as to protect the vegetation on this steep hill, but that would put the development on the same elevation as the homes to the rear. The zone change could have an adverse effect on the residences to the rear. The rear 64% of the site is not feasible to redevelop for single-family residences because it does not front on a street. Constructing a street from Jericho would not be advisable in that the new homes would be isolated from any neighborhood. Only about four homes would be permitted by the zoning and health regulations, and this would make the construction of the street not feasible. Locating large multifamily buildings on only 60 feet from the rear lot line is consistent with the character of the adjacent neighborhood, is not consistent with the character of the adjacent neighborhood. The plans submitted with the petition reveal that the development would be about 20 to 25 feet lower than the neighborhood in the rear. This would partially screen the apartments from the homes. In order to adequately buffer the homes, it would be necessary to provide a substantial vegetated buffer zone on the site. The plans submitted with the application depict a design that is not in compliance with the zoning ordinance relative to building height, building length, units per building, parking retaining wall height, and altering environmentally sensitive land. This design creates more of an effect on the neighborhood than what a design that is substantial compliance with the zoning ordinance. Site analysis by the Planning Department suggests that about 90 to 100 apartments could be built in close compliance with the zoning. The actual number depends on the apartment size and the site design. The parking requirement, one and a half spaces per apartment for garden apartments is not adequate for current and future demands. It may have been adequate in 1960 when it was established, but almost all apartment sites in our area need two per dwelling. There are no on-street parking lanes or municipal parking lots nearby to be used if the parking onsite is not adequate. Nine, referral to Suffolk County Planning Commission. Pursuant to Section 239M of the New York State General Municipal Law, this application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because the site is less than 500 feet from a state highway. The filing response dated November 6, 2015, was received from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Pursuant to the requirements of Section A 14-14 to A 14-25 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, the above referenced application, which has been submitted to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, is considered to be a matter of local determination as there is no apparent significant county-wide or intercommunity impacts. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. Ten, the recommendation. It is recommended that the Planning Board recommend that the Town Board approve zone change petition, 2015-13 TDG Comac LLC, for a change of zone from WSI and R10 to RMGA, based on the following reasons and subject to the following conditions. The reasons. One, the proposed zoning would help meet the need for residents in town. Two, the location is suitable for multifamily residents. Three, the proposed zoning would help reduce the excess of commercially zoned land in the town. The conditions. One, a 30-foot natural buffer shall be preserved along the southernmost portion of the property adjacent to the residences. Two, in addition to the natural buffer along the south property line, there shall be an additional 30 feet of densely planted vegetation for a total buffer of 60 feet. The planted buffer shall include slopes and any necessary retaining walls. Parking and drive aisles shall not be located in the buffer. Three, two parking stalls shall be provided per dwelling unit. Four, the site shall be in compliance with the requirements of the New York General Municipal Law 699B Long Island Workforce Housing Program. Five, approval of this petition does not imply that the Board of Zoning Appeals or Board of Site Plan Review should approve variances of the site design submitted with the petition. Six, the RMGA zoning shall not go into effect until a declaration of covenants and restrictions on a form approved by the town attorney is filed with the Suffolk County Clerk, limiting the premises to the conditions described above.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Armentano. I'm an attorney with Farrell Fritz. We represent the contract vendor, TDG Comac LLC. I have with me also two of the principals, Rob DiNoto and Paul Pacilico, to answer any questions that you may have.
Before you start.
Yes.
Do we have the affidavit of posting submitted?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And also, I see you handed out packets. It says in the matter of petition of TDG Comac LLC, do you want one of these, the one that was given to the Planning Director, to be made part of the record?
Yes, please.
Be deemed made part of the record. Okay, please proceed.
Certainly. I think people are familiar with this property. It's located at 1126 Jericho Turnpike. You can see from our application, the first exhibit gives you an aerial overview of the site. It is currently known as a courtesy motel. The site is in contract to be redeveloped. That is the purpose of our presentation here tonight, is for the recommendation for this change of zone to the Town Board. Looking for, just for location purposes, Exhibit 2 indicates the tax lot and the location along Jericho Turnpike, as well as the residential properties located to the rear. Again, just for your reference, although it was part of our application, you do see the survey of the property indicating the location of the motel and its various buildings associated with that. We're basically here tonight to discuss, you know, the reasons for the change of zone. My understanding from reviewing the Comprehensive Plan, as well as the staff report, is that, you know, this is a use, and this type of zoning is not suited for this location. So the purposes of our application is to rezone it to a garden apartment complex, which will be age-restricted, and that is an important note. That goes-
What's the age restriction going to be?
55 and older.
Thank you.
We'll enter into a covenant to that effect, and the reason for that is for the sanitary conditions here. There will be an onsite sanitary plant, and the flow characteristics and design flow from Suffolk County indicate that we can house 118, you know, age-appropriate communities here, which would limit the size of our sewage treatment plant. The site constraints limit our size and location, so that is one of the reasons for the age restriction. It also would diminish impacts to the local community, and that's another rationale for having the age restriction in this type of development.
Would you be prohibiting children there?
That would be up for discussion. It would be, I would think that children could stay with the appropriate condition, but I wouldn't think, this is not a school-age situation, so if we were to be limiting our characteristics of the age, then I don't think we would have school-aged children generated by this.
Well, when you say you're willing to enter into a covenant that limits the use of the property to a 55 and over apartment complex.
Correct.
So if it was 55 and over, then I think that would prohibit children residing there, because they can go visit there, but they wouldn't be able to live there.
Right.
Okay.
What would the number of bedrooms be per, how many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom apartments?
I think the unit count was-
I think he said that.
Forty-two two-bedroom and 76 one-bedroom. The concept being here that this, you know, unless there are other questions, that this-
Yeah, keep going.
Right. Also, you can note, site characteristics, we took site photos of the existing conditions. That's Exhibit 4. The building is in somewhat a state of disrepair. You know, it is our client's intention to build a much nicer facility in this location, and that is also, the site plan is in its, you know, general format here. That's Exhibit 5. That is indicating the basic layout. Obviously, we are willing to work with the Town and the Planning Department to modify requests that they have made as part of the staff report. Certain buffers will be taken into consideration. You know, the issue here is this site will be below grade from the residences to the south. The other factor here is, you know, you're on Jericho Turnpike. This use is not a high-traffic use, and I think there is also an application across Jericho Turnpike for a assisted living facility. So I think you're seeing a change in the character of the area, which this change of zone is a good transitional zone to make this, to make this portion of Jericho Turnpike, you know, a little bit nicer. So I don't know if you have any questions for me?
I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
Some of the other board members may have some questions, too. First question is, is it the intention to knock down all the existing structures and have a new structure built for the 55 and over apartments?
Yes.
Okay, that's the first question. Second question is, is it the intention to keep all the existing vegetation that's in the south end of the property and add to it to form the buffer that is part of the recommendation?
We can. Currently, the grading of the site does not indicate a lot of change to the rear portion, 60 feet or so. Correct.
Now, you said that the structure is going to be-
Below.
What's that?
We will be grading it.
Below.
Correct.
Right. Now, the property now, it's a pretty steep slope, up a hill, right, to where the hotel is now, and there's a house in the back. Is it the intention to grade it out so that the entrance to the property is road level? Or is the senior complex, senior building intended to be built up where the hotel is?
No, the concept here, it is, you can, I guess you can glean that from the last exhibit. There will be a grading down to the road, so that the grade change from the road will be where the complex will be. The complex will, for lack of a better word, be closer to grade of Jericho Turnpike.
Closer to the road level.
Correct.
Than up on the top now where the hotel is, all the way up on the top of the hill.
That is correct. Will be down 20 to 30 feet from that hilltop.
So what's the grade for-
Sir, sir, you can't ask any questions now? After he's done with his presentation, and any of the board members have questions, anybody in the audience will be allowed to come up and speak. You have to give your name, your address, because we're being recorded here. Everything is on record, so you have an opportunity, come up, give your name and address when he's done, and then you can ask whatever questions you want and make whatever comments you want, okay?
I have a question.
Do you have a question?
I have a question. Then what will happen is the proposed dwelling is going to be, is not going to be that high, so the residents who live beyond that to the south won't have a towering building over them.
That's correct. Our intention is to be below them. There'll be a retain, we will be sunken below them, so the likelihood of them, we will not peer over them, if that's the concern.
Is it a one-story building or a two-story building?
It is a two-story building.
Okay. And can you tell me just an estimate, not counting the house, because the house is very close to the south property line, but the two buildings of the hotel, how many feet is it from the closest point of the hotel building to the south property line now, and how many feet do you approximate it will be from the closest point of the new building to the south property line? In other words, is the senior apartment building going to be closer to the road in the middle as opposed to the current hotel structure?
I would say the hotel complex right now is kind of a sprawling shore.
Oh, it's two buildings, I think.
Right. Well, there's two real buildings, and there's a third out parcel, which is more to the south. It's like, it's like-
Well, there's a house that's almost on the south property line.
Correct.
So I'm just talking about the two buildings that form the hotel. Can you just give me an approximation, or if somebody that's with you can do that? How many feet it is now from the southernmost part of the hotel to the south property line, and how many feet you anticipate the new building will be from the southernmost part of the new building to the south property line? The idea is to get an idea of the setback on the upcoming building as opposed to what's there now.
Yes. Based on our submission, the third exhibit, that is the survey, the setback from the existing hotel is approximately 109 feet. That's how it's, at its closest point to the residential properties to the south.
Existing hotel?
Exist, correct.
Okay, so it's 109 feet from the southernmost part of the existing hotel to the south property line, and what is the anticipated or estimated distance from the southernmost point of the proposed structure to the southern property line? Is it going to be more or less at 109 feet or about the same?
Slightly more than 109 feet. We are within the setbacks required.
All right, so in other words, the new structure, if this is approved, is going to be further away from the residences than the building that's there now?
Correct.
But it'll be two stories, not one.
That is correct, but we will be lower in elevation. Currently, we are-
How much lower in elevation will you be?
It's going down to the road.
Yeah.
Right, but what's the-
It's built into the hill.
I've been there, I lived in Comac, but if anybody-
Yeah.
I'm going to want to take a closer look. I mean, it's not like I don't-
I just-
I 100% agree.
Also, just for the aspects here, I mean-
I'm sorry?
Just in terms of the overall request here, this is a change of zone. You know, the site plan obviously can change, so I want to make sure we're not getting-
That will all be done at the site plan review.
Correct.
If this is approved, and if you get all the way to the end, that's what will be done then. But I think these are pertinent questions.
Understood.
And I'm sure some of the people who live in the area might want to have answers.
Right. If you're going to have a two-story building there, but you're going to be lower to grade level with the road, how much lower to grade level with the road will you be before you reach that point? Are we talking about two-story building but 10 feet lower, two-story building but 5 feet lower?
The elevation stuff, just look at that.
Yeah, that, sir, if you want, could you just come up, give your name and address for the record, because if you're speaking, we're on record here. Just give your name and address. And I think that was a good point. If you can, give us a comparison of the existing roof line that's there now and what the proposed roof line will be in terms of height.
Sorry, it's a Robert DiNoto personal address you want?
Business address is fine.
7600 Jericho Turnpike, Woodbury, New York.
And you're what you're-
I'm one of the principals of the-
Okay. Yeah. The question is, if we could have a comparison, just for the record's sake, of how high the roof of the three-story building is going to be, that's going to be lower down, starting down by Jericho Turnpike, compared to the existing roof of the building that's there now?
Okay, so-
Because people who live in the back may want to know that.
Understood.
My assumption here is there's going to be a net gain in height. The question is how much?
No, I don't, I don't-
I don't know.
It's a very steep hill.
Yeah, I get that, I know.
This is an elevation. But if you look at it, it's a good idea. I mean, I know the site pretty well, we've lived in Comac, so if you had more of a look at Comac.
There's probably not a one of us who wouldn't be familiar, but we should do a closer look.
Yeah, the roof line is at or below the existing motel roof line.
Okay, so the proposed building's roof line, even though it's going to be three stories, it's going to be down closer to Jericho Turnpike, so that the top of the roof line of the proposed building will be at or lower than the existing roof line of the building that's there now?
That is correct. If you want, I could show you what, on here, would you like to say it?
If you could just tell me approximately what, yeah, if you want to show us, that's fine.
These, this was the plan submitted, and we could submit this again to evidence. The audience can look at it. It does depict existing ridge height and proposed ridge lines.
This is the ridge line for the projected new structure.
Correct, right here. And this is the existing. I don't know, I don't have the exact scale.
I understand.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
This is the existing grade?
No, this is the existing height of the roof now.
Would the existing grade be this?
Dotting line, existing grade, correct.
Yeah. So it'll be built into the hill, it'll be not that visible from the people, the residences behind.
That's why our attorney was saying, it looked like it's-
Right. You got to use the microphone, I'm sorry, because we're on record here, we're on, being recorded. You can take it.
You might want to pass it down in case they-
You know what? Leave it, leave it on the table there, because some of the residents may want to look at it.
Okay.
Okay? When they come up, they might want to look at it.
Do you have projected rents for the one- and two-bedroom units?
We've done some preliminary underwriting, and the one-bedroom units, I want to say, were, Paul, 18? We can check now. If you want to give us one moment, we'll pull that up.
Should I need rough square footage of the apartments still?
Yes, that's actually, one bedroom's about 600 square feet. Two bedrooms, I can tell you, will be below 1,200 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Good, and the rent projections?
Yep, we're pulling them up right now.
Got it, thank you.
Any other member, any questions, any other questions for any member of the board before we turn it over to the public?
Yeah, just regarding the elevations. I know the, your proposal shows the elevations you propose once the project is completed, yet your existing survey does not. How far where this retaining wall is, will you be removing earth?
You mean, how further south of the retaining-
Yeah, the elevation, I guess, by the retaining wall would be 122 feet above sea level, but where this existing building is, I guess that you're removing, there's no elevation. And I would just like to know how much you would be excavating from the site, and then how tall would this retaining wall be that you propose to construct? Yeah, the elevation, I guess, by the retaining wall would be 122 feet above sea level, but where this existing building is, I guess, that you're removing, there's no elevation. And I would just like to know how much you would be excavating from the site? And then how tall would this retaining wall be that you propose to construct?
And after the audience speaks, if anybody has any more questions, you know, be my guest.
No, I think that's basically my concern.
Yeah, I'm saying, sometimes with something that somebody in the audience, or some of the residents may bring up, may prompt another question. So we'll give the audience a chance to speak, and then we can go back to us if we need to.
The height will be, it'll vary, but I think at its highest point will be 20 feet high.
20 feet?
10 to 20 feet is...
But this is, I just want to make sure everybody understands, this is, from the perspective of the homeowners to the south, you're not going to see it. It'll be as if it just drops off.
Facing Jericho Turnpike.
Correct. From Jericho Turnpike, you will see a retaining wall, as there are on many properties along Jericho Turnpike in that stretch. I mean, it is a hilled area, so this is a site constraint.
Yeah, where some of the retaining walls, they're not really, I think, pleasant to look at, either from Jericho Turnpike or the, to the neighbors who will butt them. And so, you know, that's a concern.
Understood. And in speaking with, with planning staff, I mean, the concept here is we can tier that so that it's not, I mean, you will have the grade change, but not as drastic. So it can be tiered so that we don't have to go at such a drastic vertical.
That's also a safety consideration. A 20-foot high would probably be higher than the ceiling.
Correct. So if tiering is something that site plan requires, we can definitely tier, and if that's what the board is indicating, that'll be something in role.
No, can you, sorry, can you just give us an estimate, again, just an estimate, of how far back from Jericho Turnpike the retaining wall will start?
Yes, I'll give that to you in a second. Just again, regarding the retaining wall, it can be sloped.
Yes, and it's also, it can be tiered also. That's probably something that would be done at the site plan review stage.
Yes.
We're aware of what some of the retaining walls look like, and we're sensitive to that as well.
Well, you're building in a complex that you want people to want to live in, so I'm sure you're not going to put something ugly there, just for normal business practices.
Right.
And likewise, we don't want the people who are already there to be uncomfortable with what they now have to look at.
They won't look at it.
But they won't, from what we're saying.
Oh, the people who, residents who live there now won't see it.
Right, understood, that's a concern.
You're saying a potential new occupant?
Well, the residents...
The residents, okay, the neighbors, I don't think will be able to see it unless they're on Jericho Turnpike.
Because it's facing Jericho Turnpike.
Understood, understood.
But if you're calling for a dimension, the close...
Approximately, how far back from the road will the retaining wall start? Again, just approximately. Because that has, that has an aesthetic effect for people driving by, I think was what Mr. Chayes was talking about.
I'm roughly estimating it at 100 feet at its closest point.
Closest point?
To Jericho Turnpike.
And then how many feet from there to the back property line, approximately? Again, just ballpark.
It's a, I'd say another, another 100 feet. It does, it'll ring it, so it comes back around.
I got it, okay. About 100 feet going back, 60 feet's going to be a buffer.
Correct.
Okay.
So the closest point to retaining wall to the adjacent property is going to be 60 feet or greater?
It is currently estimated at 60 feet, which will be the edge of that buffer. I mean, if there's a need, this is a site constraint, if we wanted to pull it forward, that's something we can factor. It's all engineering at that point.
In other words, the buffer is going to be on top of the retaining wall?
Correct.
Yes, absolutely.
So unless there's any other questions, we'll respond.
Oh, just hang on.
The apartment rents, I think you were working on.
Yes, I have them.
He has them, and then what we're going to do is we're going to see if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments.
Sure. The idea between, thank you. Between 1,500 and 2,300.
Okay.
Per month.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions for me?
That's just for now, for us, that's it for us, from us for now, but if you're finished, I'm going to see if anybody in the audience wishes to be heard, either with questions or comments, and then we'll go back to the board if anybody else has any further questions, and then we'll, there's going to be a motion on it. I believe what's probably going to happen, likely to happen, is that likely this is going to be adjourned to permit some members of the board, if they wish to, go do what's called a site inspection. Go and look at the site. I mean, some of us may be familiar with it, some of us may not be familiar with it, but some board members may wish the opportunity to go there in light of what has been presented to us and look at it with that in mind.
Understood.
So most likely, it's going to be adjourned for an onsite inspection so that all five of us have an opportunity to go there, or go there again, and take a look at the site with this presentation in mind.
That's good.
That being said, anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this, if you do, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address. If you don't, then you don't have to. Just give your name and address, sir?
Sure. My name is Craig Crasnac, live at 47 Astor Court, which is pretty much, I'm sorry? K-R-S-A-N-A-C.
So you probably, your property probably backs up on...
Yes, it does, and it's, you know, I get a bird's eye view of everything that's going on back there because we have a two-story building, and the buffer that's there now is not quite adequate, although I try to let the trees grow, they keep on cutting them for LIPA. But what I wanted to say is that I want to thank the opportunity for coming here to be able to have the opportunity to say something about it all.
Thank you for coming.
And, yeah, and, you know, I've lived on Long Island all my life, and I've watched, I grew up in Syosset, and I've watched all of Jericho Turnpike change from Syosset all the way out here for the last 30 years. And quite honestly, what happened in Syosset, I really hope doesn't happen here in Smithtown and Comac. It's just, it's just not so pretty over there anymore. Or I used to ride a bicycle long Jericho, you can't do that anymore. Not that you would do that today, but back then you could. Anyway, with that being said, the changing of the proposals from residential to commercial...
Well, I think it's partially residential and partially wholesale service industry, right?
Yeah, where they're going to go all residential with the townhouses, I think as far as a homeowner, I understand that, I think that would be a better thing for us all. However, based on what I saw on the plans and the size of the structures and the facility that they're building there, not so much. It seems a little bit overzealous, over big, it's just a little bit too much. Based on my aerial view from what I can see now and some of the pictures, I came down earlier in the week to get the plans, and if I stand out, stand at my back window, I will be looking down past the buffer and into the second-story building of the story. You know, there are three stories, I'll be looking at at least the second and third story. I'll be waving hello to the, to the people on the third story, is what I think. I could be wrong, but the way it looks, that's the way it's going to be, because there's not much of a buffer there now. If they're going to be building more...
Well, there's going to be a buffer, if this gets approved, there's going to be a buffer within that 60 feet.
Yeah, right now, there's a, like a 10-foot buffer between whatever...
We're talking about a 60-foot buffer here.
60 foot?
Yeah.
Before it drops? Okay, then that's all...
That's going to be, if this is...
From our property line or from the existing property line?
From the back property line.
Okay, so right now, there's a, where the telephone...
I believe the proposal that was read calls for a 60-foot buffer from the south property line, which would be where your property is.
Okay, so, because my property ends, there's like 10 feet of nowhere land where there's telephone lines go, and then there's another fence, which I believe, is that going to be 60 feet from that?
60 feet from the property line.
From my property line, okay. So that's really 50 feet overall, in my eyes. Anyway, my concerns were of the grading there, is it going to be a 50-foot drop, and what's going to prevent people from falling off the edge of it? Is there going to be a fence? Is there bushes? I'm sure they're going to be putting more trees and stuff like that in there, but...
Well, I think that's going to be decided at the site plan review stage, but I would say that if they're going to build a complex like that, and they're going to build a wall, we've already addressed the issue of it being, of it being sectioned so that it's not one big giant slope.
Okay.
But I think if they're going to do something like that, it would be incumbent upon them for just prudent business practices not to build something that's going to be a hazard, because then they're going to end up getting sued.
Right, I understand that, that's fine. Also, what about light pollution? What kind of lighting are they going to be putting there? Is there going to be lights that are going to be aimed down, directional? I mean, these are things, as a homeowner, you don't want to see coming through the trees, especially now in the wintertime when there are no leaves on the trees. We have a bird's eye view of everything that's going on right now.
Well, I believe the code is now, has been, that the lighting has to be directed down.
Okay.
In any building that's built in.
Well, not what's there now.
Well, that's an existing...
Well, what's there now is different than what, you know, if something is there now, it's been there for a while, but if they're going to build something new, they have to build it in the...
I know, you know, I'm a creature of habit, and you get used to what you have behind you, and it hasn't changed in 30 years, and it's, it's more of a wildlife refuge back there than it is anything else, which is kind of nice. There's a lot of, there's, you know, we see owls, we see birds, we see things that we never see anymore, and that's going to be gone. But that's, you know, that's, I guess, development. My other concerns were, Jericho Turnpike is already pretty much congested, you're going to have 118 units there, times two, people, two cars. It's another couple of hundred cars coming and going in and out of that area on a regular basis. Is that going to mean another traffic light? I mean, there's enough traffic lights already. You know, things like that are what I think about. Now, these are just some of the things that I came up with originally, that I'm sure there'll be more things that come on my mind. I was wondering, do we get another chance to have a voice and opinion of what's going on?
Well, what's going to happen, I think you might have heard me tell the applicant's attorney, this is not going to be decided on tonight.
Okay.
This matter is going to be adjourned, and what we're going to do is we're going to adjourn it to a date certain, so everybody's here now knows when it's going to be, all right? Because some of the board members, maybe all the board members, want an opportunity to go out and do what's called a site inspection.
Right.
That means go there and look at the site ourselves.
Right.
So what we're going to do is, I'm going to keep the hearing open. What that means is that anybody from the public who wants to make comments on the new, next date, be free to do so.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I'd like, don't get me wrong, I'm not against it altogether, I just think that three stories is kind of high. Two stories, I don't think there's anything on Jericho Turnpike that's three stories right now, that's within a couple of hundred feet of that place.
There's a new office building that might be three stories, relatively new office building.
Yeah, but the offset and the height off the Jericho is much higher. I think the elevation is higher, and the people behind it are not seeing anything.
Mr. Chairman, may I add?
Yes, I just want to ask one question, maybe you can answer it, maybe, will we wait till the resident is finished?
I think I'm done, but thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. The property now that's there, partially WSI, partially residential.
Right.
How much from the road back is WSI before you get to the residential part?
The WSI is 200 feet, and I believe the total depth is around 500, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, so it's almost halfway WSI, and then the rest would be residential?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. You want to add something? Please do.
Just so the public knows, the planning board is acting as an advisor to the town board, so as the chair said, he's going to keep the hearing open, and you can come back. Once this board makes its advice to the town board, at some point, the town board will probably have a hearing. The only reason that they wouldn't have a hearing is if they don't want to consider it at all. But normally, they do, when someone makes a petition, the town board has a philosophy that everybody deserves their day in court, where they can come and make a presentation. The town board is not required to have a hearing, they can ignore it forever, or they can deny it without a hearing, but they don't think that that's the right...
That's not the usual way it happens, though.
Right, that's not the right thing to, they feel that's not the right thing to do.
Doesn't usually happen that way.
So they normally have a hearing.
And what he's saying, what he's saying is, in this, the applicant is seeking to change his zoning on the property, which is split-zone wholesale service industry, which would allow a lot of different uses there, such as, I think, a restaurant, or a car garage, or a bar, or a lot of different things to go in...
Another hotel.
Or another hotel, in WSI, which is the front part of the property on Jericho Turnpike. The back part is residential, and they want to change it all to garden apartment zoning. Now, as Dave said, when an applicant is making an application for a zone change, the planning board votes on it, but we're only voting to recommend to the town board whether they should grant or deny the zone change. The town board is the only one in this town, and probably most other towns, who will grant or deny the zone change. We're just going to make a recommendation to them from a planning standpoint whether the zoning change should be granted or not granted. But the ultimate decision is with the town board, and as Mr. Flynn says, the way that it's done in this town is that, in all likelihood, they'll hold a similar hearing to this, because the town board will be the one that's going to have the final vote on it. As a matter of fact, they're not even bound to follow our recommendation. If we recommend approval, they don't have to approve it, they could deny it. If we recommend denial, they don't have to deny it, they could approve it. So this whole process, to a certain extent, will be repeated before the town board, one way or the other. Sir, you want, just give your name and address, please?
John Barretsky, 49 Astor Court. A couple of things.
Can you spell your name for the reporter?
Beeson Boy, A-R-E-T-S-K-Y. A couple of things. One, you read a ton of stuff out, which was very informational, which we don't have.
There's a memo?
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, there's a memo that he read, which is a memo to the town board, it's a matter of, to the planning board, it's a matter of public record. If you contact the planning department, they will be more than happy to give you it. I don't know whether they would mail it to you, fax it to you, email it to you, or have you go down and pick it up.
That's fine.
But one way or the other, you can get a copy.
And then also, the books you guys got that he was paging through, the attorney, I don't know, is that a...
Can we make a photo, do you have any extra ones?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
If you don't mind. The other thing is, you brought up a couple times about a good businessman being very prudent, and on, he would want to do things to make his business nice. They have not, whoever the owners are, have not been prudent for 15 years there.
I don't think it's the same owners, but he'll tell you that.
How long, how long has it been?
We're in contract.
Oh, okay, 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 good. So the other thing is, the tier that you're talking about, now, I don't know, but the elevation doesn't make sense to me, like, if you tier it, isn't it going to become, take away those parking spots that you're saying you need two per apartment?
No, when you say tiering, you mean tiering the retaining wall?
Yeah, is it not going to make it longer, or no?
Well, I think we're talking about 20 feet, which I think probably would be the height of this, this room, and I don't know whether it's going to be two tiers, three tiers, but it's...
It's not going to make it longer and extend it?
Well, it would, it would not be straight down, obviously, if it's going to be tiered, but how many more feet it would take to tier it, it depends on how many tiers there are, but I can't imagine it would be a tremendous difference.
And then, as far as the buffer between us, and they said they're going to do plannings, do we get to see exactly what they're going to do, to see how much, you know...
Well, what happens...
Sight we're not going to see?
What happens here, okay, is we will adjourn it, because some members of the board want to go look at the site before we vote on it.
Yeah, it sounds like you know it.
It's, well, I live, I grew up in Comac, I live in Comac.
Right.
So I know the site very well, okay? But other people may not, they may have been there, they may want to go back now that we've heard what the proposal is, and inspect it with this in mind, okay? So we're going to give everybody an opportunity on the board to do that.
You guys can come in our backyard, look at it from our side.
I think that would be good.
We do that all the time.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I would welcome that.
We do that all the time.
49, he's 47.
We do that all the time.
Do you have any objection, then? Absolutely not.
We always, we just won't walk in your backyard. If you're home, we'll knock on your door, identify ourselves, we'll have ID cards, and ask for permission to go in your yard and take a look from your side.
Yeah, let's see what you see.
But what's going to happen is, this is going to be adjourned to a date certain, we're not going to vote on it now, but our vote is only advisory, we recommend approval or denial, then the town board will have a similar proceeding, and they have the final say on whether the zone change is going to be granted or not. After that, there's more procedures, and ultimately, there'll be, it'll be decided by the Board of Site Plan Review, which is basically the town board, and that was where the final site plan specifics are set down. And at that, would also be normally a hearing, when you'll be able to go and see what the[1484.38] what the site, final site plan is going to be like, that if it gets to that stage, you know, this is in stages, that's the very last stage. If it gets to that stage, you'll be able to go and see exactly what the proposed site plan is going to be.
And then, how will we be contacted when each step that we can come and listen and hear?
Well, tonight, you'll know the date because we're going to adjourn it to a date certain. Sometimes we just adjourn things, like you heard in the beginning, we just adjourn things. This particular matter, we're going to adjourn it to a date certain, so you're going to know what the date is.
Perfect.
When it goes before the town board, they have to post it again. That's how you got notice now.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Sure, of course.
The way this is drawn right now is it doesn't comply with the proposed zoning, so they couldn't build it the way they've depicted it. In order to try to get approval to do what they want to do, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get variances, and that requires a hearing as well. And just, the Board of Site Plan Review, just so the planning board knows, they don't actually have hearings. They've opened meetings, but there's no public notice about a hearing.
But the town board will have a notice when they vote on it. It'll be posted for the town board if it's on their agenda.
Correct, there's no notice.
To grant the zone change.
Right, but there's no public notice. There's an agenda, but there's no advertisement in the newspaper, and there's no posting of the property and no mailing.
For the Board of Site Plan Review.
Right.
But when the, when the town board says the zone change, that'll be posted.
Oh, yes, that'll be posted, and there'll be a mailing.
Right.
Most people, when they want to know things about buffers, they come into the planning department.
Yes, Mr. Flynn made a very good point. As this thing, as this proposal advances, if it advances, anytime any of the residents want to go down to the planning department and ask questions of the planning staff, you're free to do that. And if it gets to the stage of where we're dealing with the final site plan, anybody who's here, or anybody who's not here, can go down to the planning department and speak to one of the planners there, have the file pulled, and go over the information. I'm sure they'll be very happy to help you. But that's, that's going to be way down the road, if it gets that far.
Mr. Amantano, the contract of sale, is that contingent on getting the full 118 units, or is there a sliding scale?
More for the applicant to answer.
Sure.
The, the contract of sale is contingent upon a certain number of units. I believe it's 107, I believe that's...
Not less than 107?
No.
Okay, the reason I ask is because the department, I think, was recommending something in the neighborhood of 90 to 100 units is appropriate. That doesn't mean you won't get the 118, but I just wanted to know if it came in as low as 100, if your contract would be invalid.
It would be.
Okay.
Yes, the answer is it would be. I just wanted to point out a couple of things in response to, well, thank Mr. Krasnick and Mr. Barretsky for coming up and speaking. My partner and I are both from Long Island. We live in Long Island. We're very sensitive to what goes on here. We're not a huge organization that's going to do things without keeping the local residents in mind, certainly not. You know, currently, one of your concerns was what you're looking down on now. You're looking down onto that motel. We've been there a couple of times. It's basically, from what we see, is a three-hour stay motel. People are in, they're out, and there are rooms, so that's the same...
Some people have a different name for that, but we get the point.
You got it. So, also to the point of the, you were concerned about the traffic in and out. I think 55 and older people, they're still going to work, so they're there in the morning, they're there at night, they're not in and out all day long, which is what you have now. And then you have the long, the longer-term stay, which I know is there, whether it, there's supposed to be or not. But, you know, the element doesn't seem to be great right now. As far as the drop-off, it's a two-tier. So it's two 10-foot retaining walls. So you're going to have 10 feet, and then you're going to have some grade, and then another 10-foot retaining wall. So, and we both have children, and certainly, we'd be concerned that, you know, someone would fall off something, so we would make sure that it was safe and as, per code. And as far as the plantings go, my guess is they're going to be evergreen plants. I don't know what is there now, I don't think it's evergreen, I think you see right through it. So, again, and it's going to be densely vegetated. We're not talking about, you know, one row of, you know...
On each tier?
Yes, I, I think, Marty, is it on each tier, right?
On each tier.
Yes, on each tier. It'll, yes, it'll absolutely be planted, you know, from that line, you know, right up to the edge. What's that? No, but we'll have plenty you can move, probably. Also, you were concerned about the drop-off. Again, the height is going to be at the current height or lower than it is right now. So even though it's what appears to be three stories, which it is, it's built into the hill, and that is cut down. So you're not going to be dealing with, you know, this monstrosity staring out at it. It's going to be a very nicely constructed, you know, aesthetically pleasing, you know, piece to look at, and I would think that it would be certainly better than what's there now, and, you know...
Sorry, you have to, if anybody in the audience wishes to speak, unfortunately, you have to come up and use the microphone because we're being recorded, and we want to get everything down. It's not only recorded by the sonographer, but it's being videotaped. So anybody's free to ask the gentleman questions, but you have to do it from the microphone.
Did you want to? Okay, and, you know, we're getting your names and numbers, and we'll give you our cards, and concerns, feel free to call. You know, we're, like I said, we're, we're there, we pick up the phone, so, all right? Thank you.
Just two things, just so everybody's aware, and I think it's been read, but I just want to reiterate it. What, the proposed structure that they want to build will require variances, which will be either granted or denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals, all right? In a town of Smithtown, like most towns, there's three boards that deal with land use issues. The town board, us, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if and when they go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for those variances, there will be a hearing held with the Board of Zoning Appeals, and those issues will be addressed by them. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Amantano mentioned that they would be willing to enter into a covenant with limiting, limiting the use of the property to a 55 and over apartment complex. Now, number six on our conditions says, "The RMGA zoning shall not go into effect until a declaration of covenants and restrictions on a form approved by the town attorney is filed with the Suffolk County Clerk, limiting the premises to the conditions described above," which would be conditions 1 to 5. I don't see in any of those conditions, 1 to 5, unless I missed it, anything requiring or limiting the use of the property to a 55 and over apartment complex. Is it possible for us, since we're not going to vote on it tonight, to add in a condition that says that? Because if, if the covenants are only going to reflect the conditions 1 to 5 that are in the memo, there's nothing there that says it's got to be restricted to 55 and over, so that if those are the only conditions, and this is ultimately granted, the way I see it, it wouldn't be restricted to 55 and over. So I'm requesting that another condition be put in that says that the, the premises shall only be used for 55 and over, 55 and over apartment. And I think they're in agreement with that.
Yes, we will agree to that.
Because this is not in our conditions.
Understood.
Okay, and I think that was the understanding, but I want, I'd rather have it right in black and white in the conditions.
Understood.
Okay.
Could you have, by the time of the next meeting, have your architect consult with the assessor? I'd be curious as to what the projected assessment would be, and if you could tell us what the taxes on the current structure is. Because it could be a substantial increase in taxation for this new improvement over what's there now, and if you're not bringing children into the complex, there's not going to be any school expense to the community, but there'll be a benefit to the school district in taxes.
I think that would be the result, but yes, we will get that information.
Good, thank you.
All right, now, we're going to adjourn it for an onsite inspection. We know we have the holidays coming up. Our first meeting in January is the 6th, is that correct?
Yes.
So you want to put it on for this, prefer to have it on the second meeting in January, so that everybody has enough time to go there?
Either way, it's fine, 6th works for me.
All right, everybody comfortable with the 6th? We could all get there by then, okay? So what we're going to do is, we're going to adjourn this to our first meeting in the new year, which is January 6th, Wednesday, January 6th. That'll give everybody an opportunity to go there. It'll give the, the planning department time to slightly rework the conditions so that we can have an explicit condition regarding limiting the use of the building to 55 and over. And then, we come back on January 6th. Everybody will have done their site inspections. The hearing is going to remain open, so if any member of the public wishes to come back on January 6th and ask questions or speak, you're free to do so. Or anybody who wasn't here wants to come then, can come and make comments. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to keep the hearing open, and we're going to adjourn it to January 6th for the reasons that we stated. And hopefully, on January 6th, you'll have our decision.
Very good, yes, appreciate that.
Thank you, so, motion, please?
Chairman, in the matter of 2015-13 TDG Comac LLC, I move that we adjourn this matter to the meeting of January 6, 2016, to allow four site inspections. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. So adjourned to January 6, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out.
Well, that's not for us to decide.
No, I get that, I get that.
Okay, on to the next one. Okay, folks, you could, you could, excuse me, folks, if you want to have more discussions, please do, but please go to the back of the room, or to one of the other rooms, because we have other matters to deal with, and we just need, we just need the, the record to be clear on the other matters. Thank you all for coming.
The next item on the agenda is a reduction of a performance bond, 1039 Garden Gate at St. James.
Go ahead.
The applicant is requesting a reduction in the performance bond for the above referenced subdivision. The final map of Garden Gate at St. James, number 1039, was approved by the planning board as an eight-lot subdivision on March 2, 2005. The town board accepted a letter of credit in lieu of a performance bond in 2006. The bond went into default and was purchased by the applicant. The applicant posted cash in lieu of a performance bond in the amount of $212,725. Town board accepted the cash in lieu of a performance bond on December 17, 2013. This application was distributed to the appropriate departments for review. The engineering department responded to the request determining that the items under the purview could be reduced by a total of $40,654 as follows. One, 15-inch Class IV RCP. Two, 18-inch Class IV RCP. Three, 10-foot roadway leaching pool. Four, catch basin. Five, catch basin. The highway department responded to the request, saying that it agrees with the engineering department's finding that the performance bond can be reduced by a total of $40,654. The highway department stated that it does not recommend reducing the curb or asphalt amount at this time, as the final lift of asphalt is not in place. There are broken curbs, and several lots are not yet developed. The planning department concurs with both the engineering and highway departments in reducing the performance bond by a total of $40,654. Resolution, if the board favorably considers the requests, the planning department suggests the following resolution. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request of William Dollar for a performance bond reduction by a total of $40,654 within the subdivision known as Garden Gate at St. James 1039.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address?
William Dollar, 13 Sheriff's Court, East Atoket, 11733.
Are you the attorney for the applicant?
No.
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Do we have the affidavit of posting?
Yes, I handed it to them this afternoon, they put it in the file.
Do we have it?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Not here, but yeah.
Have you heard the, the review and the proposed resolution submitted by the planning department?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with it?
No.
You have any questions you want to ask any of us?
Yeah, I've been developing like 25 years, and I've built in all the communities above, in Brookhaven, Smithtown, all over Long Island. And the only question is, is that I really helped the town out with this letter of credit that defaulted into planning board, and I posted the money with the town attorney as a good faith thing, just to get it off the books before the year out. And we did pave it, we did fix the curbs, we did make sure the drainage passed, all the inspections necessary. We did all the street lighting, and I'm not going to argue over the $40,000, but it was supposed to be significantly more, and that was an agreement made with the town attorney, I don't recall his name at this time, it's been a year, longer than a year, and it was supposed to be much, much more, and...
When you say much, much more, could you do a...
Over $100,000, we were told.
Total or $100,000 more?
No, total of $100,000. And it, all, the only thing that's not done is the street trees, the final lift and a curb patch, and that's the only items that were not made. And I can tell you about it, but, you know, whatever it is, it's going to be, but if they can take that into consideration, maybe review with highway department or engineering one more time, we waited, you know, a long time. This was supposed to be done over a year ago. We were supposed to get this reduction immediately, and the highway department had issues, engineering couldn't get their comments together with highway, and we waited over a year, and that money's been sitting there doing nothing. That's all I wanted to tell you.
So are you requesting that the matter be adjourned so someone could look into why it's $40,000 versus not, versus $100,000?
I don't even know what it, I don't know what that would mean by adjourned with the performance bond.
Meaning that we wouldn't vote on this right now, it would be adjourned, and I guess it could be adjourned to the first meeting in January, like the last one?
Right.
If you are requesting that?
Right.
For someone to look into why it's $40,000, not $100,000, as you say, unless Mr. Flynn has anything to offer on that point right now?
I'm sorry, this is the first I've heard that.
Okay, all right, so in other words, if I...
So would you, would you prefer that we adjourn it until January 6th? And perhaps you can communicate with somebody from the planning department?
Sure.
And have them look into why it's not $100,000 and it's $40,000?
Yeah.
And perhaps, when we come back in January, it'll be higher than $40,000? Possibly it won't, but we'll certainly give everybody an opportunity to see if we can work it out.
That would be great, just to have the opportunity, thank you.
Okay, then, in the matter of Garden Gate at St. James, number 1039, I move that we adjourn this matter to the January 6, 2016, meeting of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Are you free to contact the planning staff?
Yes.
To explain to them your concerns and see what can be worked out?
Okay, thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
The next item on the agenda is a preliminary subdivision, 14, number 1169, map of core land division, Kings Park. It's a recommendation to the BZA. This matter involves a request from the BZA for a recommendation by the planning board relative to 13 area variances in connection with the above referenced pending subdivision application. According to the enabling legislation, a planning board cannot approve a subdivision that is not in compliance with the zoning ordinance unless the applicable variances are granted. A zoning board's authority to grant variances in pending subdivision application is inherent from the enabling legislation, Town Law, Section 2776. Also, according to the enabling legislation, a planning board cannot grant variances unless the town board has delegated that power to them. This application has variances that the town board has not delegated to the planning board. The application to the BZA is for the following variances. On Lot 1, alter environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of 15%. To permit a structure within 10 feet of environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of 25%. Reduce road frontage from 40 feet to 33 feet. Reduce lot frontage at setback from 100 feet to 33 feet. Increase front yard paving from 25% to 45%. On Lot 2, reduce road frontage from 40 feet to 33 feet. Reduce lot frontage at setback from 100 feet to 33 feet. Reduce rear yard setback from 60 feet to 30 feet for an existing deck. Increase side yard paving from 25% to 34%. Lot 3, alter environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of 15%. To permit a structure within 10 feet of environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of 25%. Reduce road frontage from 40 feet to 33 feet. Reduce lot frontage at setback from 100 feet to 33 feet. The subdivision application is to subdivide a 1.96 acre, 85,259 square foot parcel into three single-family lots. The property is T-shaped, it is approximately 100 feet wide at the street, and 300 feet wide in the rear, and it is about 420 feet deep. A single-family residence is located 60 feet from the rear. The front is mostly wooded, except for a driveway, and the back is mostly grass, except for two wooded sections. It's largely level, except that northern part of the T has a steep 18 to 30% grade slope that drops approximately 30 feet. This slope occupies about 1/4 of the site. To the north, south, and east is Zone R10 or R15, and is used for single-family residence. To the west is Zone R43, and is used for parkland, Suncom Meadow State Park. Based on design studies, the maximum number of lots that would be in compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations is two, regardless of the presence of environmentally sensitive land. In order to subdivide the land into three lots, the proposed, the proposal requires approval of the 13 variances listed above. The enabling legislation, the courts, and the zoning ordinance require that the BZA and the planning board decide variances by balancing the benefit to the applicant and the detriment to the public, health, safety, and general welfare. The same authorities require boards to use the five considerations listed below. However, it seems that there must be a special reason to require zoning boards to request a recommendation from the planning board. It seems likely that the reason must have to do with the planning board's core mission regarding subdivision approval. That centers on the adequacy of access and infrastructure to support the additional growth and design. Infrastructure includes drainage, utilities, et cetera. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Two, whether a benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Three, whether the proposal, proposed variance is substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Five, whether the alleged difficulty necessitating the area variance was self-created by an applicant. Which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the planning board, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. One, the proposal will create three lots with substandard frontage. Within 500 feet of the proposed subdivision, there are approximately 22 lots that front core road. Only one of these has substandard frontage. The creation of three standard lots will likely result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Additionally, the variances would likely result in several adverse effects on adjacent properties. Locating two houses behind houses increases the potential of police, fire, and emergency medical services having difficulty finding the house in the rear. Additional houses in the rear would reduce the privacy of adjacent residents and would increase the noise and fumes near the adjacent homes. Also, the slope drops to the north. This would mean that the extra house would look imposing and cast a shadow on the homes to the north. The top of the house could legally be over 80 feet high relative to the grades of the lots to the north. Two, the property could be subdivided into two lots in conformance with the building zone ordinance and the subdivision regulations. Three, the requested frontage variances are substantial. For each of the three lots, the applicant is requesting a 17% reduction from the required road frontage, and a 67 reduction, 67% reduction from the required lot frontage at setback line. Four, according to the preliminary map layout, the majority of Lot 3 consists of environmentally sensitive land, slopes greater than 15%. The elevations range from 190 feet above sea level in the south side yard to 166 feet above sea level in the north side yard. The construction of the dwelling on this lot would require significant alteration of the slopes, and would likely require a retaining wall that is at least 11 feet high. Five, the alleged difficulty is self-created. In conclusion, the property could be subdivided legally into two lots, but the addition of the third lot creates a substantial impact on other homes, especially the two immediately north of the site. Furthermore, the existence of three driveways ranging from 300 to 400 feet each would likely create a burden to adjacent residents. If the adjacent neighbors do not express opposition, this should not be construed as a tacit approval, inasmuch as neighbors are often reluctant to jeopardize their friendship.[1702.46] Recommendation, the planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Be it resolved that the planning board hereby recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals deny the variances associated with the subdivision known as Core Land Division, number 1169, for the following reasons. One, the proposed layout would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and would create adverse effects on adjacent properties. Two, the applicant has an alternative in that he can maintain the existing dwelling on the site or divide the parcel into two lots in full conformance with the building zone ordinance and subdivision regulations. Three, the proposed variances for road frontage and lot frontage at setback are substantial. Four, the proposed environmentally sensitive land variances will have an adverse effect or impact on physical and environmental conditions within the neighborhood. And five, the alleged difficulty is self-created.
Good evening.
Good evening, Don King, 75 East Main Street, Kings Park, New York, attorney for the applicant.
Has the affidavit of posting been submitted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
This piece of property, I lived up on Leaf Court, as I told the zoning board of appeals, I would walk over to this property when I was in college or law school, and I always thought, what a wonderful place to build a house. There was a doctor in Kings Park that built the house there, and Tom and Patty Birch purchased the property. When I go before the zoning board of appeals, I'm kind of going to present what I presented to them because I want you guys and lady to know what they have granted in the past. Lot 1, which is in blue, is 26,312 square feet. That's 11,312 square feet more than is necessary in this zoning district. You need 15,000 per lot.
Well, you, I'm sorry, but you said in blue, that's on your map over here?
Yes.
For anybody who may be watching it, since there's no color, you can keep it there, would be the lowest lot closest to the bottom?
That's correct.
Okay.
Lot 2 is green, that's the current house.
That's in the middle.
That's correct. That's 22,581 square feet. That's 7,581 square feet more than is required in this zoning district. Lot, the red, the red lot...
Which is the top lot?
Correct. Is 36,366 square feet, which is 21,366 square feet more than is necessary for the zoning in this area, and I would respectfully request, at the end of this, that the board go out and visit this site.
We intend to adjourn this to do a onsite inspection before we vote on it.
I can't tell you how important it is because...
I think it's very important.
Yes.
The dimensions you gave are not net of environmentally sensitive land, though, is that right?
Well, I'm getting, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Okay.
We do not need a floor area ratio, which means that if you take the slopes out, we still have enough land for the zoning district. There's no FAR here, and the reason I mention that is I have some cases I'm going to hand up to you that the zoning board of appeals granted to me, and I think it's significant because, I'm going to read them and I'll hand it up, I'm going to keep it short. Case 14743, 42 percent floor area ratio. Case 15419, 40 percent floor area ratio. Case 15710, 50 percent floor area ratio. Case 14024, 37 percent floor area ratio. Case 12943, 50 percent floor area ratio. Case 12360, 59 percent floor area ratio. Case 14823, 49 percent floor area ratio. Case 13444, 57 percent floor area ratio. Case 14005, 40 percent floor area ratio. Case 15128, 44 percent floor area ratio. And case 13894, 43 percent floor area ratio. I'm going to hand up the decisions that I got on that.
You want that to become part of the record?
Yes, I do, and it's a prior practice of the zoning board of appeals.
Is there a copy for everybody? Is that what, they're all the same? Or is this one packet?
One packet.
Oh, these are all the decisions that you just mentioned?
All the decisions of the cases that were granted to me.
Okay, the record should reflect that we received the copies of the decisions that Mr. King has referred to. I'm going to hand those over to the planning department staff. Any member of the board who wishes to look at them can do so after the hearing is over between now and the new date.
And I have a photo of 270 Pulaski Road, a house behind a house that was granted by the zoning board of appeals, and the only access to Pulaski is the driveway. I'd like to hand that up.
Part of the record as well?
Yes.
Okay. Record should reflect, the applicant has submitted two photographs of what appears to be a residence located at 270 Pulaski Road, and these two photographs will also be part of the record, since it's just photographs, we can all look at them right now. Are these the same? No, they're similar, but not the same.
Similar, not the same.
I see it. Different angle.
The next, I'd like to pass up this...
These two photographs will be also deemed part of the record? Take a look at them.
The next is a matter I got, I think many years ago, for the Gunnions, it's 228 Pulaski Road, where there's a house behind a house, and in fact, the house in the back has just recently been expanded. I'm going to hand up the letter, the survey, and a photo of that house.
Also be part of the record. And let the record reflect that counsel for the applicant has handed a photograph, which appears to be of the residence located at 228 Pulaski Road in Kings Park, also a, it's like a, a letter from the director of planning dated April 10th, 1985, which would pertain to the same property, I presume?
Yes.
And also a survey pertaining to the same property. These three documents will also be deemed part of the record.
Okay, I'm going to hand up that now, a property in the neighborhood, 234 Core Road. This is Dennis Ahern's property. He has a house behind a house. He's a neighbor of the Birch's. I recall that I, in some manner, was at a hearing or requested approval for this house behind a house, and the first photo shows his house, and the second house photo is the house to the left that is behind, or in front of Dennis's.
Yeah, you have to, use the mic. Okay, two photographs have been handed up by the applicant's attorney. The first one appears to be of 234 Core Road in Kings Park, which has 234 Core Road written on it, and the second one is the house behind that house, is that what this is?
The second one, I believe, is the house in front.
House in front, okay.
Yes.
Right, okay, I got it. And these will also be deemed part of the record?
Yes.
I'm going to hand them around to other members of the board to take a look at, and then we'll hand them down to the planning staff to be made part of the record.
Dennis called me and indicated he's in favor of the application. The other close neighbor is Greg Hild, the former assessor, he attended the last meeting at the ZBA. While he did not speak, he was sitting with the Birch's and advised that he was in favor of the application. The next photo is also Core Road. Now, this is across the street and down a bit from the Birch's. This is a 50 percent floor area ratio. This was granted to Greg Hild, and ultimately became the supervisor's son's property. This had a 50 percent floor area ratio. So, when you talk about character of the neighborhood, you have Dennis behind, a house behind a house, and you have this house with a 50 percent floor area ratio. I'm handing up the photos of the house, and this is R10, so that means that there was a 5,000 square foot lot or percentage of the lot because of slopes, when they talk of character of the neighborhood. And I never voiced an...
Hang on, hang on one second, Mr. King.
Sure, sorry.
The record should reflect that we've been handed three photographs of 255 Core Road in Kings Park, along with a survey of that particular property, and these ought to be also made part of the record, correct?
Yes.
We're going to hand them around to the other board members so they can look at them, and also will ultimately hand it down to the planning staff so that it can become part of the record.
Certainly had no objection to that being approved, we just asked for the same consideration. Now, I want to...
These are photographs of a house, to the rear of a house, is that what you're telling us?
The front of a house.
This is the one in the...
On Core Road, just down, if you guys go out and do an inspection...
We're going to go, we're going to go.
You'll see that house.
Okay. Paperclip there? Oh, good.
There's a way making this more.
And would it be accurate to say that these photographs and surveys that you've handed up are intended to show that what you propose to do is not out of character in this neighborhood?
Correct. I'm not asking for a floor area ratio.
Okay.
And I'm not asking for a house behind a house. When you go out, I would respectfully request that you note or take the map and see these contour lines of the houses that are down from this property. The significant slopes here on, on these three houses.
So it would be the houses that are on the corner of Valley Road and Core Road, correct?
Correct, they're up there on the left.
Right.
And you see the one in front, I think that may be Greg Hill's current house. I'd like you to take a look at that, and if you go down the road, I'm going to ask you to please go down Valley, or down Core, down Valley, make a right onto Broadview, come up Broadview, and then make a left on Woodvale, and then go back down Woodvale, and please note, on Woodvale, you will see two houses that the rear of the houses can only be described as a cliff, it could be a climbing wall in a gym. So certainly the character of the neighborhood is not going to be impacted by these houses that have more than enough land or far in excess of almost every house in the neighborhood. That's very important for my presentation to you, to just drive around there, take a quick look, go in, I would also ask you to go in and take a look at the Birch's property, go in the driveway. I don't think that what's raised by the planning department is relevant to this because if, as Dave wants, two houses, that would mean that each house would be 40-something thousand square feet in a 15,000 square foot district. On the way here tonight, I would also ask you to look at, on Landing Avenue, if you go by St. Anthony's and you're proceeding towards Smithtown after the curve down from the old St. Anthony's, before Nadia Court, you will see three houses that are serviced by a driveway. Somehow, that was approved by the town, and if you go there...
Is this before Nadia Court?
Before Nadia.
In the vicinity of the old St. Anthony's property?
It's after you come down past the old St. Anthony's.
Okay.
On the left-hand side, before you get to Nadia, you'll see the three signs for the address of them from one driveway. So if that's okay, why isn't this okay? And these houses have been there for years, they're down below, and if you take, if you take a look of, of the zoning here, R10 across the street, and the zoning, we have 100-foot frontage servicing this property. The property on Landing, I don't think has 100-foot frontage, and there's a subdivision as you come down Core before this property that was approved, that has a 10, it's a 10-lot subdivision, but the road coming out to Core is not even 100 feet. So, I'm, I'm asking you to give it, give us a shot here for the, for three houses, and we're not going to change the character of the neighborhood, it backs up against Sunken Meadow Park. Nobody's opposed to it, nobody's been in here. There was a shill or a guy came in who opposed it, but he lives over in Charter Oaks, where they have 15,000 square feet. So don't do as I do, do as I say, and I ask you to please take a close look at this and help him out if you can.
We will definitely be adjourned this for onsite inspections by the board. Mr. King, do you have any preference whether it's adjourned to January 6th or January 20th?
I'd like it the 6th, if you can make it.
Everybody comfortable with being, to be able to go out there and by the 6th?
Right. I think I'm in Nessaw Clark on the 7th, so I can make it.
If it's the 6th, if everybody's comfortable between now and then, we can get out there, if that's fine, everybody seems to be, so we'll adjourn it to the 6th, and we'll also keep the hearing open, so if there are any comments that anybody wants to make at that time, they can make them.
The onsite is so important here.
Well, we, I see that right from the get-go, and...
Drive through there, I'm telling you, you're going to, what the heck is going on, you know?
No, we, I don't think we'd be able to be doing our job correctly if we didn't go out there and take a look at it, and also these other properties that you've submitted.
Particularly Landing, too, take a look at that, please.
That's the one by the old St. Anthony's you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. King?
Yes. Would you just adjourn it for an onsite, just now, I'll, I'll tell you about that after, okay? Okay, so we're going to adjourn it to January 6th, 2016, a motion, please?
In the matter of Core Land Division, number 1169, I move that we adjourn this matter to January 6th, 2016, for an onsite inspection by the members of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so adjourned to the January 6th, 2016, meeting, and the record should reflect that the hearing is kept open. Thank you very much. And also, I just want to be clear on the record, I don't think we stated it then, with respect to the Garden Gate matter with the reduction of the performance bond, 1039, that that is adjourned and the hearing is kept open as well, so it doesn't have to be reposted. Okay, we have left is the minutes?
Motion to adopt, the minutes of October 21st, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so adopted. We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, so adjourned, and...
Merry Christmas, all.
As it's been said, a Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
And God bless us all, everyone.